Kayle Rice, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Roll call, please.
Councilman Cunningham.
Here.
Councilwoman Goddard.
Here.
Councilman Henderson.
Good evening, Noga, I'm here.
Councilwoman Jensen.
I'm here, Noga.
Councilman Nathan.
Here.
Councilwoman Souza.
Yes, here.
Mayor Cohen.
Here. We have draft unapproved minutes of the regular meeting of the City Council held September 18th, 2024. Have there been any comments? Any comments on the dais? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, before we go to the public may be heard, I have a statement on the Playland tax issue to read. So, there have been public statements from a variety of quarters about the city's present property tax matter with Standard Amusements and the county over Playland. We asked the county to meet to discuss a resolution, and they obliged. We are about to authorize our council to proceed to finalize an interim settlement proposal that resolves certain matters in which we believe is good for all concerns. Concerned, sorry. Discussions on a fuller resolution are continuing in the coming weeks. Some have focused on a potential financial issue for the Rye City School District that might exist as this controversy plays out. The city is covered in accordance with law and without harming the city budget, any revenue shortfall the school district would otherwise have experienced. We're constrained from saying more at this time, however, we'll update the community on progress when the constraints of litigation and settlement discussions allow. Now, I suppose at this point, we might just go ahead and do the resolution.
Sure.
So, I'll read from my marked up draft. Whereas the county commenced an Article 78 against the city on September 10th, 2024, seeking approximately $14 million in tax payments from the city. And whereas the county and Standard will be filing an Article 7 proceeding with respect to the taxability of the Playland parcel on the 2024 assessment rule. And whereas all parties wish to resolve both matters so as to not impact the city's school district and county budgets. And whereas, consistent with the interim settlement discussions had with the council, Corporation Council will work with the county attorney's office to draft a settlement agreement to resolve the Article 78 proceeding and also a consent judgment to be so ordered by the judge to resolve the Article 7 proceedings. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council authorizes the Corporation Council to settle both litigation matters consistent with the above terms. May I have a resolution?
I make a motion.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
There's no stopping him now.
Councilman Cunningham.
Yes.
Councilwoman Goddard.
Yes.
Councilwoman Henderson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Nathan.
Yes.
Sorry, it was Councilwoman Jensen.
Yes.
No, Councilman Nathan.
I'm all out of water.
Councilwoman Souza.
Yes.
Mayor Cohen.
So, just before leaving the subject, I realize that we're not in a position to provide any more detail right now, and we really won't be until what we think is done is really done. But...
Positive momentum.
Positive momentum, well said. Okay, so we have residents, I'm sorry, members of the public may be heard, Jennifer Kelly, Playland on the tax roll.
Thank you, good evening. I am Jennifer Kelly of Five Wilson Drive, and I'm here as a parent who is concerned about the impact of the Playland litigation, particularly on the school district and our children. So it's very heartening to hear that there's some movement in the right direction there. At the September 24th Board of Education meeting, the board informed us that the school district may need to come up with $2.24 million to reimburse the city for taxes that were paid on behalf of Playland but never collected. So our concern is that this is $2.24 million that the school district has already budgeted and allocated, and that is a huge cash outlay that has the potential to do incredible harm to our district, especially if we have to cut resources and educational programming to fund that outlay. In recognizing, I know that the city recognizing is difficult to budget with this litigation, and so this past tax year, Playland was removed from the tax rolls. It is our understanding that Playland has been added back to the tax rolls, and I don't know if what you've decided will impact that, but I hope that Playland will be removed from the tax rolls so that our school district can budget based on realistic tax collections, so that school taxes are not whipsawed for residents, and so that, you know, this what's happening now with potentially having to come up with this cash isn't a recurring event for our school district. Again, the concern is the kids, cutting programs, impacting the reputation of our school district, and then potentially down the road impacting our property values for all of us, whether we have children in the school district or not. So my ask is that, again, Playland would be removed from the tax rolls for this year in line with what was done this prior tax year, so that both the city and the school district can budget appropriately. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stephen Baer, on the Locust Parking Lot.
Good evening, I'm Steve Baer, I live right over there on Locust Avenue. Wanted to know if the traffic barrels are going to be permanent or removed in the parking lot? If they're going to be permanent, is there a plan to deal with them during hurricanes? Because they sit on angles on the filtration rocks. I'm concerned that they may be thrown into the Blind Brook and cause a dam at the Locust Bridge. Thank you.
Greg, it's you.
These are the orange and white barrels, those are temporary, they will be removed. Construction, we're 99% finished with it, there's a few little elements left to go, but they're definitely not going to be permanent.
Great.
It looks good, though, right?
Looks great.
Any other speakers? Okay, City Managers, report, please.
Okay, a handful of items for tonight. We are, as we all know, back in the political season, and with the political season comes political signs, or signs generally. Signs overall are not permitted in the city right of way, nor are they permitted on city property. We've begun getting calls specifically about political signs over the last several days. The Building Department is on top of that, the first step. In some cases, they're residents that simply don't know when they've put them out in front of their house in the right of way, so we're allowing them to remove those and put them in their yard if that's what they want to do, which is absolutely permitted. Ultimately, they'll have to be pulled, but if you receive calls, that's what's going on. If you're someone watching tonight and you need to know, please put signs in your yard, don't put them in the right of way, and don't put them on city property.
So, for those that are curious, if somebody puts it in the right of way thinking it's their property, what happens? Do you guys, does the city remove them or contact the owner first?
We're trying to be soft about it, so the first thing that's going to happen is someone's going to visit them, knock on the door and say, "Are these your signs? Can you please put them in the yard?"
Okay.
And do that. Ultimately, they'll have to be removed.
If they don't move them themselves.
The right of way is approximately, is it 12 or 15 feet? It's approximately 15 feet from the center line of the road. So if you're putting a sign out next to the road, it's in the right of way. But it's roughly 15 feet from the center line. Thanksgiving, believe it or not, six weeks away. Police Department is beginning the outreach to bars, restaurants, and the like downtown. This is an initiative that started about three years ago. We obviously have a large contingency on the day after Thanksgiving that likes to enjoy dinner and alcohol. It's really specifically to address underage drinking, DUI, public drunkenness, and the like. But again, the police are using a soft touch now, hoping that the bar and restaurant owners will, you know, be diligent, but we will have certainly significant force out on that Thanksgiving weekend for that reason. In the last, well, this has really been going on for quite some time, our rec fields unfortunately are being used as dog walks and dog runs. It's unfortunate that we don't have more places for dogs to play. Rytown Park is a great place to take your dog, but leash laws in this town require you to have a dog on a leash on public property. The only exception to that is the, is Rytown Park and that. We are going to, in the next week or 10 days, put signage out on the playing fields to remind people that their dogs are not allowed off the leash. They are allowed on the field, but they have to be leashed. There is also a requirement to clean up after your dog, and that is also subject to a fine if you don't comply. So these will be general reminders, but we'll also be doing social media posts.
And just to give some context for this, for those that don't clean up, which, that happens all over the place, I mean, if you live in this town and you walk, go by the Rye rec field on any spring or, you know, fall day, you're going to see a bunch of little kids playing soccer, and they're not always landing on their feet. So just, you don't want the, like, I don't want to deal with that laundry, like, nobody wants to deal with that, right? So it just, it's not to be obnoxious that the rule exists, it's to keep kids healthy. So, that's just my two cents.
Okay. So signers will be up in the next week to 10 days, and then we'll be doing some social media and the like, just to remind folks. As mentioned before, we have now opened the new tennis courts at Rye Rec. We've also finished Parking Lot One. Just a couple of highlights, because I know that people were upset or concerned about the trees that were removed at the parking lot. There were about five, four to five trees, some of those that were diseased were removed when we did the construction. We've replanted 18 new trees in Parking Lot One. It has a new drainage and filtration system related to runoff into the Blind Brook. There is a new sidewalk that runs between the two blocks. We have exactly the same number of parking spaces as we had before, however, they are approximately eight inches wider than what they were before, so thanks to that. Handicap spaces are now ADA compliant, which they were not previously, and the LED lighting is almost now complete. As I've said before, all of the design and engineering work was done with city staff, the demolition and everything except for the asphalt was also done by city staff. Same thing with parking, with the tennis complex, so thanks, thanks to that.
Let us add our thanks, it's a beautiful job.
Yeah, really great.
Not high on the list, but certainly worth sharing, our Human Resource Department is now producing a quarterly newsletter noting people's anniversaries and the like. A fact that jumped out at me in this most recent newsletter is we have approximately 150 employees in this city. The average tenure of service is over 10 years now, so I think it speaks highly to both the, you know, work for the city and that happy aspect, but also just the commitment that you get with city employees being members of the community as long as they have been. Something I'm particularly excited about, the 2025 budget is underway in full production. Remind everybody, it'll be, it'll come out on November 7th as a preliminary proposed budget, and there are budget workshops scheduled November 13th and 18th, and then the council will ultimately vote at the council meeting on the 18th of December. Last but not least is that several days ago, Tenant Environmental, who was hired by the city to review the United Hospital Brownfield development or removal, submitted comments. This is a DEC process that invites comments, not just from local governments and organizations, but also individuals. We submitted a number of comments, I will say, to reinforce the work that's already been done there, and to make sure that our neighborhoods and our residents are fairly represented. It largely was a positive report, but there were some actions that we asked for additional information, you know, for the Brownfield remediation. This is all being done in contemplation with the demolition of the tower and ultimately the site prep that'll happen over there over the next nine to 18 months, let's call it. The report, or our comments, will be posted on the website, we're going to, we'll create a new tab for that, and share that link once it's up and available. That's it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Before we go to the next item, Bob's, is your, is the subject that you wish to speak on signage in the right of way? That was addressed by the city manager, I don't know if you heard it.
I missed it.
So, okay, thank you. I'll give you the gist of it, we're on it. We're going to move on to consideration of a request from Soul Riders for the use of city streets on Sunday, May 18th, 2025, from 7:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. for a half marathon, 5K fundraising.
Good evening, Mayor Cohen and members of the Rye City Council. My name is Leslie Findlay, I'm the Director of Operations for Soul Riders. We're a local cancer support nonprofit located right here in Rye, and I really appreciate the opportunity to come to speak to you tonight about our 2025 half marathon and 5K. This will be our third race, and I'm thrilled to say that this past May's race surpassed our inaugural event, both in the number of participants and the level of cooperation among our community partners. 1,465 runners and walkers crossed the finish line, representing 22 states and 11 countries. 28% of those participants were from this very zip code. Our dedicated and committed volunteers, ages 16 to 78, filled 230 volunteer positions that day, from course marshals safely directing each runner, manning each water station, and handing out the medals at the finish line. Our volunteers helped to create a safe and fun event for all. Soul Riders, and myself specifically, are so grateful for the cooperation and support we have received from the City of Rye and our police department. While this will be our third race event, we continue to meet to review what worked and what needs to be tweaked for the following year. Our half marathon course has been reworked yet again, with incredible input from our police department. This course focuses on the safety of our participants as well as our community. It eliminates flood-prone areas and optimizes three police departments, Rye, Portchester, and Westchester County, to the best uses of their people. Because of these event reviews, our pre-race communication begins much earlier and is much broader and deeper in its engagement with our residents and our businesses. It's thanks to the close working relationships with these partners and within our community that our events have been a success. It's our goal to ensure that the Soul Riders Half Marathon and 5K is an event that can be successful, fun, and sustainable for many years to come. We're looking forward to working closely again with the City of Rye and all of our partners to make this happen. Thank you for your consideration to hold this event on Sunday, May 18th, 2025, and I welcome any questions that you might have.
Same route, yeah?
Relatively, but what we're doing is they're leaving Play, same route for the 5K, but for the half marathon, they'll be leaving and going up the opposite side of Playland Parkway, a little bit further, and then they'll be going north to Portchester, and then back down, and it will only be, they'll be coming down Forest and then back on Forest. So that way, the police have complete, and they have access on Milton, so, you know, residents have that access to get out to Milton and Oakland Beach. It just really opens up that southern Milton point a lot more, and it also helps the Rye police move their people where they need to be much more easily.
It was awesome last year.
Such a great race.
Great weather, it was so good. There's one lady who was like, "I'm so proud of myself."
It really, it's an incredible day, and it really, yeah, it's a little heart pounding, honestly, but it's been great, and everyone at the Rye Police and Greg have just been poster people, honestly, for how these things should work.
Awesome, I make the motion to approve it.
Second.
Do we have?
I think we can just do all in favor.
Correct, that's fine.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Leslie.
Thanks.
Okay, we approve appointments to the Boat Basin Commission, and I always have this question for Kristin, all the procedures appropriately followed?
Yes, they were, yes.
So, may I have a motion?
Should we name the names? Joe Pecora.
Yes.
John Beechert and John, I'm sorry if I'm pronouncing this wrong, Machetti? Muscetti?
I think just Pecora and Beechert.
Oh, Pecora and Scott Beechert, sorry, the top two. Sorry, next time, John. Okay, I'll make the motion.
They're also, they've previously been on the Boat Basin, right?
Correct.
Yes, so I just feel like it's important that we say thank you to them already for all the service they've done.
Yes.
Really, to stand up again, to do it again, really, thank you.
I'll talk to Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so do we have?
We need to have a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Did we have a second?
I'll second.
There we go.
I'll say aye.
Aye.
Presentation and resolution to establish the 2025 budgeted fees and charges for the Boat Basin. We have a presenter?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'll get right to it. The Boat Basin Commission is requesting a 5% increase across the fee schedule for the 2025 season. The fees highlighted on the agenda will not be increased. In the past, the Boat Basin Commission chose to increase only the fees of services that they felt were undervalued, and now sees the need to impose a 5% increase to the remaining services. Even with the new increases, we are still comparable to other local municipal marinas with a slight margin on the non-resident fees. Any questions?
Just for the audience, can you just, and because I don't understand, what is the per foot number mean?
So if you have, let's just say you have a 20-foot vessel, and so you just kind of go across the board, so it'll be 20 times, actually, I have the fee schedule for me. So up to 20 feet, so let's say if you have a 20-foot vessel and you're resident, you're paying currently $76 a foot, so it'll be 20 times 76, and that is the season, the summer season fee for your, for the start space.
Wait, so you're paying 20 times 76?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
And that covers you for six months from May 1st to October 31st.
Very helpful, thank you.
I have one question.
Sure.
The DePaul Municipal Boat Basin, who's DePaul? I've never, I'm not.
He was somebody that, he was, actually, I think he was a harbor master, well, we had a harbor master before, and then he ran the marina for quite a few years.
So we named it after him?
That had to be early 80s, 70s even, it was a while ago.
Evidently.
Okay, good to know.
Way before my time, I started in 86.
All right, so you answered the question I normally ask, is how are we competitively? And we are there, and non-residents a little bit more, that's probably reasonable.
We're currently, we have just about, just the holders, not including kayaks and anything else, so slip holders, I think we're close to 300 slip holders at the marina for boats. The percentage-wise, residents and non-residents is about 70% are residents and 30% are non-residents currently.
You all, the commissioners unanimously approved this, so I'll make the motion to approve it here as well.
Second.
I think we have to do this by roll call?
This is roll call, yeah.
Councilman Cunningham?
Yes.
Councilwoman Goddard?
Yes.
Councilman Henderson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nathan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Souza?
Yes.
Mayor Cohen.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Presentation and resolution to establish the 2025 budgeted fees and charges for the Rye Golf Club. Terry.
Hey, Terry.
Yes.
Good to be back here, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for your support over the past several years, you know, we've been trying to follow the guidance that you've given us, and I'm here to report that all is well at the Rye Golf Club, clubs in the greens especially, we had our Ryder Cup this past weekend, the place is in fantastic shape, the staff does a wonderful job. Chris can get into the specifics on our budget, but I just wanted to kind of talk big picture first, and that is that you've really given us three bits of guidance, or three issues that you wanted us to focus on over the past couple of years. One was that you wanted us to treat all new and returning members equally across the various categories, so no matter when you join the Rye Golf Club, you pay the same. We've accomplished that. This year, we're recommending a 4% increase across, flat across all membership categories, treating everybody equally. And we're also instituting, for the first time, a capital expenditure fee, which is also a flat fee, $100, $150, depending on your category, less for the smaller categories. But, and the idea with that is that we have a very large CapEx project list, multimillion dollars worth of projects to be done, and we just want the members to feel like, you know, part of their money is going straight to that, and it's going to be only used on those sorts of projects. It's a drop in the, it's about $114,000 next year, if approved, and that's, you know, not, won't cover what we have on our CapEx sheet for next year, but it's going towards it. So people can see, yeah, we're doing these bunker projects, and we're working on the parking lot, and we're doing meaningful things, and part of their money went directly to it, and doesn't get, you know, sort of lost in the general fund.
Terry, do we have cost figures for what's planned, that what's imminent in the next year or two? But we also had a large question with respect to Whitby Castle, and then an even larger question with respect to the necessary swimming pool repairs or replacement.
Yeah, the pool is not on our CapEx list yet, with the exception of the analysis of the issue. You know, we've set aside some money on our CapEx list to have it analyzed by a professional and tell us, you know, what the recommendations are, but that is a, you know, as you know, a very large project that we can't afford, and that we'll be looking for some help from the city in some fashion, perhaps a bond or something down the road, but that is not in our immediate future, other than the assessment of the project.
And there was, I think, work being done towards a Whitby cost report.
Right, so the, we have retained a firm to do that assessment, we don't have the report yet, actually, we'll have it before the end of the year, and that is for the major mechanicals, the roof, the windows, and the like as well. It's not included, it was not included in this year's CIP, it will be included in next year's CIP, but like I said, I expect before the end of the year, we'll have that report. The pool is more complicated because step number one is having the assessment done in terms of what we believe the useful life is going to be of the pool, so we can begin planning for, you know, two, five, seven, 10, whatever the number of years out, but there's also the larger question of what a new pool design is going to be, because pool designs have changed dramatically from, you know, when this one, you know, was constructed, you know, baby pools are gone, walk-in ends are in, there's other...
Baby pools are gone, walk-in ends are in, uh, there's other Department of, Board of Health requirements. So it's going to be a longer process than simply how much is a new pool because how much of the new pool is going to be based upon what the community and, and the golf club, um, you know, enterprise fund want.
Understood.
Okay. Um, a couple of other things, just to kind of, you know, tie a ribbon on it. You asked us also to be more transparent in our budgeting process. So we started announcing that we were going to be talking about the budget back in July. Uh, we sent an email out. We posted things on, on the, uh, club website. We held a meeting in August where we discussed budget. We held two meetings in September with, public meetings where we welcomed question and answer, um, from the public to discuss, you know, line by line, the same way you guys do it in your budget workshop here, which, you know, Chris and I will try to attend. I may be on the road that day, but someone will be here with Chris to attend that session. So we've done that, you know, leading up to, you know, meeting with y'all. So, um, that's as transparent as we've ever been at the Rye Golf Club. You know, historically, it was the finance committee made recommendations to the commission. The commission discussed it in an open meeting and then came in here with y'all. So, um, and it's been good because a lot of members have come to those meetings and participated and asked hard questions. So it's been good. The third thing asked us to do is, we've already talked about a little bit, is get out ahead of our CapEx projects. And we feel like we've done that. We've laid out the next five years. Uh, we've accomplished the things that were on our list or started to with the, we're, we're working on our bunkers. It's a big project at our club. It's the, our bunkers are old and tired and we're rehabbing them using the same golf course architect who's helped us all along. So they're coming out beautifully. It's just, we can only do two or three holes a year. So it's just going to be a long four, five, six-year project. Uh, but we do it in the off-season on the shoulders, you know? Start in October, November, and then we'll get some at the beginning of the season before we start playing golf next spring. Um, our general fund is healthy. Um, that, the, the pool is our big, you know, problem on the horizon. So we'll be back to talk about that with y'all a lot. Anybody have any other questions?
Hey, Terry, what's the status of the four, five, six project?
Yeah, it's officially on the back burner now. Just because we decided when we were looking hard at the CapEx, um, we tried to prioritize what was the most important to us. And we feel like the, um, irrigation project, that we need to upgrade our irrigation system. We have some just dry spots on the course, which our irrigation system doesn't cover. And even the irrigation system where it does cover, it just doesn't have the volume it needs because it's so old and it's, you know, pieced together. So we just decided that four, five and six sort of took, you know, it's just going to be a down-the-road project after we do the bunkers and the irrigation system. Fair to say?
You know, the systems have gotten a lot more expensive the last couple of years, too.
Right, yeah. Our original budget number was like two something, then it's three something. By the time we get it done, it's going to be, you know, four something.
We're up to four.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That sounds about right, yeah.
So, so that's why four, five and six has kind of been backburnered.
You're going to irrigate the rough as well as the fairways or, or is that part of trying to figure out how?
Correct. We're going to try to figure it out. But our main, our main goal is to figure out independent water source. Uh, just right now, we're 100% city water.
Oh, really?
So we don't, we don't have an irrigation pond. The ponds that are on our property are brackish, so they're not options for the moment to tap into and pump. So we're trying to figure out if it's a ground well, if it's something of that nature where we're going to be able to, you know, when we actually upgrade this irrigation system, it's not a brand-new fancy toy using the same five-inch pipe with the same water pressure. So that's our challenge. That's our first challenge when talking irrigation system. And then we'll decide based on that, okay, we'll have enough pressure and we'll have enough system to maybe potentially irrigate rough. Four-tier irrigation is what everybody's, you know, kind of moving towards. Right now, we're two.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's a big project.
Yeah. If we did do four, five and six, though, one part of that was to create, you know, a retention pond on premises or two. So that, that could, you know, be part of it, but that's still up in the air at this point. Anything else?
As far as, there's been questions and concern from talking to people around regarding the waitlist and transparency to the waitlist and that process, have you addressed that?
Yeah, sure. I'll let Chris talk about it. But I have to tell you, if you can call up and ask, they'll tell you. There's no non-transparency at, at all. They will, if you call up and say, what's my number, they will tell you your number. Uh, we move the waitlist pretty well every year. Um, our attrition is about 70 to 90 people every year. And we usually get a return of about two or three to one of people on the waitlist who actually say yes when we offer them the position. So if there's two 60-ish on the waitlist, they're probably going to get offered every year.
We took in 89 new members this year. Our cap is 726. We technically took in one non-resident out of that bunch. And the only reason that's a non-resident is because they moved. So they were Rye resident on our waiting list and then they were transparent with us thankfully down the road saying, hey, I'm paying resident dues. I'm actually, I no longer live in, in, in Rye. So our goal was to take 100% Rye resident last year. So all 89 of those new members were Rye residents. Uh, to answer your question, we took quite a bit off of our waiting list. The family resident waiting list is now, it starts in July of 2023. And our individual Rye waiting list starts in January of 2023. Because we fill by like-kind. We don't just go one for one. So if we lose a family membership, we're not going to replace that with an individual membership. We replace that with another family membership.
What happens when somebody's situation changes from the time they get onto the waitlist to the time they actually are offered a slot? If all of a sudden now their kids are all moved away, so you don't necessarily need a family membership? What happens with that if they were on the waitlist for the family membership? Do they now go back to the end of the list for the individual membership or how does that function?
Well, if, that hasn't happened all that much thankfully.
Right, but if it, by chance, if it does?
If it did, if it did, I would say, well, we follow up. We always ask people to follow up and we, most of the time, people ask us ahead of time, like, hey, I'm not going to do individual, I'm going to do family. That's been the case more because somebody has children. So we, what we've done is we've put them, because everything is timestamped. So depending on when they got on the waiting list, we then insert them into that appropriate time.
But they don't go to the end of the line?
No, no.
They, they're, whatever space they're on on the waitlist, they're in that. They can change their category. But whether or not they get a spot will depend on how many family openings we have. If they're the 37th family and we only have room for 36, they're going to be number one next year.
So if you're next, you're next for
Your category.
That you then say?
Right.
Oh, thanks for the call. I'm not a family. I'm an individual. In that situation, you would say, oh, I don't have that offer yet, but you're the next one when that individual opening comes.
Right. And again, we haven't had to.
We'll reach out to you, but, but you don't lose your, you don't have to go to a different list. You're all in order. It's just where the opening, okay. That makes sense.
So bottom line is if you're in the top 100, you're almost certainly getting in this year. It's the, the wait's about a year now, year and a half. It used to be three, so we're gaining on it. It's really, if you're in the top 150, you're probably getting in.
So resident-wise, there's 151 on the family and there's 96 on the individual. We're down from 323 last year.
Which moves faster usually than individual or the family?
Uh, the family. Definitely the family moves a lot faster. We also increased our cap this year by, by 25 memberships. And we allotted those because it's the largest waitlist. We allotted them to families.
And that's happened every season since, you know, I've been in the leadership over there and probably Chris can go back and tell you, I mean, it used to be like 650, then 675, then 700, now 725. And we might even bump it up a little more because it was, we weren't overrun this year. So, I mean, we're really trying hard to, you know, end the waitlist if we can. It's just volume.
I wonder if it tracks with, like, I'm assuming it does, with like turnover of housing stock and stuff like that? Have you guys like paralleled against that as people or people, or is that not really?
It's all different things.
It's, there's a lot of different variables. I think one of the biggest variables was during COVID.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So a bunch of families moved here, right?
And now, you know, golf, maybe somebody tried it and said, you know, God, this isn't for me now. We're all, we opened up.
Or maybe they got really good and then like
Families, you know, family planning gets in the way, things like that.
Are the number rounds this year versus the last, say, three years, do you find down considerable amount or?
So from three years is, yes, from three years is considerable amount. From last year, we're going to be right around, let's say, 28,000, somewhere in between there. And that's just a testament of people returning back to work, you know, in person.
Right.
Uh, we, we aren't seeing the 35, 36,000 rounds like we were in COVID when remote work was distributed prevalent.
Was that tremendously too much, 35,000 rounds in a year? Did that really just put some
That was a lot.
Wear on for.
Yeah, we, there's only so much light in the day, um, we were doing.
What do you, what, what's the comfort range?
Right, well, the USGA has this, the USGA has this rated for right around 20 to 24,000 rounds and that's a little bit high. So the comfort range is probably where we are, 25 to 27, 28,000 rounds.
Perfect.
We have a good management plan in place and we, you know, our current superintendent does a really good job, uh, keeping the course in, in, in great shape. So it, it helps. We're doing, we're doing okay right now.
I think last year, guys, we talked about a number of lessons and extra fees and things.
Yeah, the youth program especially is, is unbelievable over there now. The number of young people we see over there getting lessons, participating in the youth programs. They have these inter-club leagues where Rye Golf will play Apewamas, will play Westchester and, and it's just wonderful to see these little kids running around playing six holes in their little colored jerseys. It's, it's awesome. And when my son, who's 30 now, was that age, he wasn't allowed on the course until after 6:30 PM. So I could kind of take him over there and chip and putt a little after work and that was it. And now it's just phenomenal. It's great. They're doing a wonderful job.
You know, one thing I did, uh, look at, and, and I think it's a good trend, um, looking at the mix between non-residents and residents. Overall, for the last eight years, it looks like the high was 33% non-residents. Now we're down at 25, which I think is, is the lowest amount of non-residents, which I think is a very good thing. And on the golf course, it's, was 35% and now it's 23%. So I think that's, that's very good news to hear that there is, there's
Yeah, that's what we were hearing from the community. They were coming to your meetings, coming to our meetings, and that's what they were saying, you know, I bought a house here in Rye. Why is somebody, you know, from another town getting a shot above me? And I, we're like, fair point. And so we've worked on it. So, I mean, 100% last year, I think 93% the year before.
89% the year before that, yeah.
Right, 89 before that. So we're, we're working on it. It's just, it's slow, you know? And it's also a financial thing, as I told you guys back then, you know, it's, we get more, we charge the non-residents double.
Right.
So it's like, you know, hard to say no.
No, I, I think it's good. It's definitely moving in the right direction. So that's good.
We agree. It's a good place.
Should I make a motion? I just did it. There.
Second. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Councilwoman Goddard?
Yes.
Councilman Henderson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nathan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Souza?
Yes.
Mayor Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you both.
If I may be so bold, can I add two more things?
Go.
We're trying to restart the Mayor's Cup, which used to be a competition between Rye Golf and Apewamas back in the day. We'd love to get it going again if anybody can help us with that. Love to do that.
I'd be glad to help you.
That'd be awesome, right? Um, and then Veterans Day, November 11th, we're doing, we're, um, opening the new updated plaques that you guys were so wonderful to help us with. And this is American Legion stuff, not Rye Golf stuff anymore. So I hope you'll all be there. Um, we have Leo Matthews, who I don't know if you guys know Beth Matthews, the Matthews family. So Leo is one of my old Rye boxing kids from back in the day, played baseball with my son in high school. He's a professor at West Point now, just got his graduate degree. He's teaching political science at West Point. And he's going to be our, he's, yeah, he's a captain, special forces infantry officer, great kid. And he's going to be our keynote speaker that day. So please come and help us with that. All right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Terry.
Have a good night.
I just, can I underscore on that, the point that Terry raised? Because I think there's, we are updating the, um, the monuments and this has been literally years in the making. And Noga, thank you. You have done so much work organizing this. And I know you've worked with Ryan and others, um, also Rex Gedney and Tim Moynihan. So I, they're just, this is going to be great. I think we've got a bunch of names to add and, and honor. So it'll be an extra special Veterans Day this year, I think. So thanks, Noga.
Thank you, Councilwoman Souza. On that point, there's, we're adding 126 names this year.
Yep.
And a lot of Vietnam veteran names. And those folks are coming back for this thing. We're trying to throw together a reception afterward up in the firehouse and make it a real celebration. So.
That's great. Thanks, Terry.
Thanks, Eric.
Resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Connecticut Communications and Ring Central to provide for service and installation of a new city office telephone system. I love the detail in the
There's a lot to unpack here for such a simple resolution. Let me, I'm going to give you the 30 seconds and then I'll let, let Brian take over here. The, the telephone system here is about 14 years old. Like everything else in technology, 14 years might as well be 100 years, given the changes that are made. We are, we've gone through such a tremendous upgrade of all of our systems because technology is, is so much driven, the efficiency that we have and our transparency and our service, you know, to our residents. The phone system is old. It's got to be replaced. It's unfortunate, um, John Sullivan, who is the new assistant of the city manager, just went through this process at Takahoe, which is where he was before he arrived at the city. And he took, uh, took this, um, task on, managed it from beginning to end. What we were looking at from a cost standpoint was almost triple what he ultimately was able to secure. I wish he was here tonight to thank him. He's sick, um, so he was not able to be here. But I'll let, um, I'll let Brian do the, do the technicals, uh, on, on what we're doing.
Yeah, so, uh, he's, John's done a good job in briefing me on all the work he's done. Uh, but basically what this project is designed to do is take our outdated phone system, which relies on on-premise infrastructure, uh, and move to a hosted voice of IP or VoIP system. Uh, as Greg mentioned, this project was led by John. It's going to continue to be led by John and we really have benefited from his experience doing a, a very similar upgrade in Takahoe. So what we did is we compared pricing from five different providers. The, uh, the proposal that is before you from Ring Central and CT Communications not only provided the best value for the city, but their proposal is well below the existing Sourcewell contract, uh, which is, uh, not, not something we're typically able to say. But because it is on contract, we do not have to go out to bid for this. Uh, you know, we've met with them several times, uh, at CT Comm. Several of the members of their current staff worked with the city's last phone upgrade 14 years ago. So they're familiar with, uh, the people in the building, um, and our existing environment. And, uh, just, uh, you know, the new system is extremely resilient from a continuity of operations and security perspective, in addition to the cost savings that we will experience. experience. So we questioned them at length about emergency services, public works. They understand that those systems cannot go down even for a minute. They, CT Communications has a 24/7, 365 local support line. It's not outsourced anywhere, so we'll have direct lines to, to their staff in the event something happens. So happy to answer any questions.
It's voice-over internet.
Correct.
As I understand it. So how does it differ from, say, our homes where if the internet provider goes down generally, we all lose our telephones?
So, yeah, so we have the ability to take, in the event there's a, you know, the internet goes down, and we haven't experienced that yet. One of the things Greg and Kerry did over the last couple of years was really enhance our internet service here with fiber lines and upgrades. But we can take the lines to, say, City Hall or PD or PW and turn those over to our cell phone. So as long as we have, so that's a backup, right? We'll maintain some copper backups as well, although we're getting rid of a lot of those, because we won't need them anymore. But, but this, this system does ensure continuity of service. It's, it's one of the reasons, you know, most police departments in, in the region in Connecticut have gone to this type of hosted system, emergency services, you know, city governments, et cetera.
So we can both reach the, I'll call them the constituents of the municipality, the police station, DPW, and we can also reach beyond our borders?
Correct, yeah.
The other aspect, just from an emergency service standpoint, is things like 60 control dispatch from the county and the like are separate and apart from this. So it's, we, those systems remain redundant and in place the way they are when it comes to police, fire, you know, any of this.
And we, I, I think Brian answered my question, but to tie his answer to what you just said, we can reach 60 control, even in an emergency, despite the fact that for the rest of us, our internet is gone.
Right.
I have two questions. One is, in their sales documentation, they talk about 59s for uptime, but it's not in any SLA in the contract, which generally contracts like this do have SLAs with uptime commitments. And if they're bragging about 59s in the sales docs, it should be in the contract. So that's just one note not to be.
You read that thing?
I know, I, I, I work in technology. I know what to look for. So, but my other question is, what other municipalities are using this particular vendor?
So, actually, this particular vendor, Rye Country Day, just finished their build-out using this vendor. So I talked to their IT director. Several, they, they're throughout the state of Connecticut right now. Scarsdale School District uses them. We will be the first New York municipality to contract with them. But they're throughout the region in Fairfield County.
It says over 400,000. I mean, that doesn't.
That's, I was talking about CT Comms. Yeah, Ring Central is everywhere.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, are they new? Are they, you know, in terms of?
Yeah, that makes me nervous.
CT.
They just started in Connecticut?
No, they've been, they've had a presence in Connecticut for a long time.
Okay. So how long have they been in Connecticut, do you know?
I can tell you.
And I know I'm putting you on the spot, because.
Yeah, they, they did provide that. I can, I can circle back to you on that. I don't have, I don't believe I have that in front of me, though.
But you're saying Tuckahoe, so if, we would be the second municipality, right?
No, Tuckahoe is, John led a upgrade to a VoIP system in Tuckahoe, yeah.
He did a similar process there? But, so that's what I thought at first, too, but then, I mean, so I, I will go on record as saying I'm a little nervous that we're the guinea pig on this, because cities, cities, like, have.
They have several municipal clients, just, we'll be the first in New York, but there are several in Fairfield, Fairfield County, Connecticut, and then throughout the state of Connecticut.
Okay, so they do have municipal?
Yes. Many, many.
Just not in New York. Okay, that makes me feel a little bit better. I do still want the SLA in here.
I would say to look at that.
Thank you.
What is the SLA?
A service-level agreement. So it commits to uptime, and they do have, you know, force of measure clauses and all that kind of stuff that lets them out of it, you know, force, you know, nature and whatnot. But, but they do have, I mean, they brag about five, 99.999 59s of uptime in their sales materials, but generally when they, that's also a component of the contract, and it's not. So if we, I'm happy to approve it if we could get that in.
So if you want to prove it contingent upon giving that?
Yes, I will motion that then.
In our service agreement?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
So this is roll call.
Councilman Cunningham?
Yes.
Councilwoman Goddard?
Yes.
Councilwoman Henderson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Nathan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Souza?
Yes.
Mayor Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. And thanks, John.
Resolution amending the 2024 fiscal year budget by increasing police patrol equipment expense line by 120,000 and the law enforcement technology grant revenue line by 120,000 due to the city receiving $120,000, excuse me, grant award from the New York State Division of Criminal Justice's Law Enforcement Technology Program. So congratulations to the city and to staff on receiving that grant.
Greg, I have a question. Wait, I'm happy to move it or whatever, but I feel like there's been a few of these, like, where we've approved, like, you know, expense lines for police, maybe above what, what has been budgeted. Like, it would be good to just get a running tally of that.
That's fine. I mean, the reason, this is purely an administrative change. It doesn't affect the tax rate, doesn't affect the expense line.
Oh, I know that.
This is simply, we've received a grant. In order for us to actually spend the money, it has to go into a line.
I totally understand that. My point is separate from this. It's just more like, we've had a couple things where we've been approving things. I'm just curious as to where we're netting.
It's great technology, too.
Yeah, so.
I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not following you.
We've had a couple things that come from us, and maybe it's just been moving from one budget line to another budget line. And if that's the case, it's fine. But I feel like we've had a number of things that have come up in front of us for, like, public safe space, public safety, all not suggesting there's no merit to it. I just want an accounting of what has come in that has been maybe, that wasn't budgeted or has been, you know, incremental to what we had already laid out in the budget last, when we approved it last year.
Okay, I, I'll.
We can offline.
No, I can talk to Kofi about it, and, and we, you can, we can talk more about it.
Yeah.
So may I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Cunningham?
Yes.
Councilwoman Goddard?
Yes.
Councilwoman Henderson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jensen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Nathan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Souza?
Yes.
Mayor Cohen?
Yes. So we have a request by the American Legion Post 128 to conduct its usual Veterans Day observance on the Village Green on Monday, November 11. And in case of rain, the American Legion requests the use of City Hall on that date and time. And as we've heard, it won't be just a usual observance. It will be an enhanced observance. And so, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So under old business and new business, I have two brief statements on behalf of the council. We're two days past the one-year anniversary of the terrorist attack on Israel that killed 1,200 people, injured many more, and resulted in hundreds being taken hostage. Several of us, Jamie, Sarah, Bill, and myself, attended the moving remembrance held at Community Synagogue on Monday. We once again deplore the attack and further actions by Hamas and its allies. We pray for the return of the hostages and a lasting peace. The Hamas attack allowed a despicable wave of antisemitism to reveal itself in the U.S. and globally. We stand against this base hatred. Now, moving to the situation in the southern United States. Tonight, as we proceeded through our agenda, Hurricane Milton began pounding Florida. We extend our thoughts and prayers to those affected, including the Rye residents who have made Florida homes now in the storm's path. Similarly, our thoughts and prayers go to those affected by the recent storm Helene. So, any other old business, new business?
Make the motion to adjourn?
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Greg, the budget meetings are at 6:30, correct?
Yeah, we're shut.
Yeah. I think that.
I, I, I don't remember. I'll stop my head. Maybe we can, we can schedule whatever.